...not being the case, so.
That takes a lot of pressure off then.
Right, do you, you hear what I'm saying, right?
Yeah.
No other department can do that.
No, 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 no.
I mean, you come the closest to.
And we just couldn't figure out, I think the barrier here was we couldn't figure how you were, in your mind, thinking about how the accounting would work out, taking forty thousand dollars of a salary and sticking it on that other, that other page.
Well, because you're not devoting that amount of time to the rest of the Parks and Rec services for taxpayers, so to me.
We didn't know how the accounting would be. He didn't know where he was going to get that extra forty thousand dollars of fees.
Oh, yeah, he doesn't have to worry about that. We worry about that. That's really a taxpayer gap.
Because you're trying to be revenue.
Right now, we have a zero amount of revenue.
But you can't be.
And that's, that's the difference is you're trying to be revenue neutral and we're saying there's no need to be revenue neutral. We just want to see transparency. We want to see what the actual costs are.
But I think the project screen for your commission is, is the best of both worlds. They can look at that, say, oh, we don't, we're operating at a loss, so we've got to do something about it. But for the bigger budget taxpayer, there's a different audience. So two tools will, will serve two masters, I believe.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good. I think I'm good. I just, just.
So, so I think that's what we're looking for is either a standalone enterprise fund that says if this was its own department, this is going to be the revenue, this is going to be the expense, or back to the off-book, this is, we're going back to the way we did it last year. You guys just drive me flipping bonkers and just include it as a, I watched my work. Go back to the way it was before, but off-book, keep your enterprise zone. And I think, I think the board would be accepting to either one of those two positions, but we would want to see either a holistic view of the whole Park and Rec department or Park and Rec without the beach fund and the beach fund, not some of this kind of, well, we're paying for that, but that's really your job.
The project thing is really more for your commission anyway, right?
Yeah, I would think, I would think you would want.
I mean, that's a micro study of the beach. That's why there's a commission for that. We care about the bottom line number.
Okay. So is that going to make everybody on the board happy? If we see one of those two formats or both of those two formats? I'm okay with seeing them both, too.
We'll drill down and get you some great detail on an offline.
But don't, don't.
Bottom line number around the beaches.
But not the twelve dollar and fifty cent thing.
No, 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 no. Indirect costs, the director costs, the maintainer costs, if we need to divide those out a little bit better, and a few others. And there'll be an offline thing that, we're not trying to, you know, hide anything. We'll get you the exact cost. Where you want to fold it into this budget, fold it all together, you can all do that later.
Okay.
Bottom line is, we're going to need this much money to run the parks.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think our, my intent was coming to you was I wanted to show a neutral.
Yeah, we don't want.
You know, a neutral revenue budget and.
We want to see real, not.
We like that, but that's okay.
If it's real, if it's real, we really like it. If it's not.
We're, we're more interested in transparency than we are these shells all match these shells and these buckets.
Don't use the word shells.
Clan, Scotland.
Got it.
Buckets.
Any other questions?
Just a, just a quick question on how you came up with the, the model of the enterprise fund. Were there, was there some blueprint that you used, another town? How did you?
So what we did is, we had these discussions last year about starting an enterprise fund.
Okay.
So then I had our staff, when we paid a bill for bathroom materials, that was earmarked towards the beach. And so I knew this was coming. We'd been talking about this for about a year and a half, so I used those figures and then the lifeguard figures are easy to figure out. Just pulled the lifeguard.
Because I didn't, I didn't, the reason why I'm asking that question, I didn't, I didn't, in going back and having to redo here, I don't want you to reinvent the wheel.
No, no. It doesn't, might not know about the special revenue fund. And this is where it comes from, right?
Pretty much, yeah. So all of our programs are in a special revenue fund.
Okay.
There's no operating budget at all. All the fees that are charged for our programs cover the costs of our programs.
Okay.
That money rolls over from year to year.
Yeah, not at all.
In fact, I, you know, I want to come back a couple of weeks, a couple of months and give a presentation, because that was part of the agreement, was to come and give a presentation on where we are as far as the revenue fund is concerned each year. So that has been very successful for us. It's a great program. It's allowed us a lot of flexibility on what we, things we're able to.
Okay, that was actually one of my questions of the night that I passed over because we were really in the weeds on your, on your topic.
So all of our program money is in a special revenue fund.
Correct. Okay, okay. I just didn't want you to have to go back and if there's a model out there that, you know, because I think the, one of the issues is, you know, how much detail are you going to give in one of these enterprise funds? I mean, what, you know, to cut your, you know, show portions of your salary and how do you really do that legitimately or, or accurately, I should say? Yeah.
It's going to be a best guess on, on my part, to be honest with you, because I hadn't been tracking that. My maintainers is a little bit easier because I know how long it takes for them to cut the grass, how many times we cut the grass there, how many times we groom the beach, that kind of thing. So I can kind of pull those numbers out. Mine and the rest of my staff is going to be a little.
I think it's vague.
You know, you're looking at, yeah, I don't want to open up.
Okay, well, thanks.
Chain of worms, but our.
Okay.
All you need is a swag.
Any other questions for Park and Rec?
Thank you, Dave.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to take a break? Are we all good?
Yeah, I'll take a quick break. Thanks for that.
Okay.
Yeah. I love it.
So.[367.53]
From a clarity standpoint.
It's okay, I cheat them, they don't get handed out three, 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 two.
Okay.
Go on to others.
I just would request one thing, we are, the next four budgets are 105, 113, 317, and 109, and I just would like to give a 10,000 foot, just a quick, I'll be quick, as far as a five-minute or less, as far as just a synopsis, because I sit and represent a lot of the other people who are here doing one department, I'm doing four, so. With the colors, the first color of gray on the top is what you have in front of you in your budget books. The one line from a highway sanitation up top, because there's a lot of moving parts of the highway department, and you guys are about numbers, you want to know numbers, you want to know percentages, and I want to show it to you, I want to tell you it. So, in the highway sanitation, the only, the only line that's not in your budget books is the adopted fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, but those are the numbers on the front. The next thing I want to talk about is, in the past two years, so in this past fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, it's note number one, these four budgets, 105, 109, 113, and 317, were cut this year, mid-year, in November, 170,000 out of the 243,000 mid-year total town budget, so 70% of the town cut came from these budgets. In fifteen, in fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, these four budgets were cut a combined 254,000 out of the 415 town cut for 61% of that. If you total those two numbers up, these four budgets have been cut a half a million dollars, 497,000 the last two years. So, the next line, it's a blue, comment number two, it's in the blue at the bottom, there's three, three cells that are, these four budgets that combined, what, in the adopted budget in fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, two years ago, our budget being proposed right now is 5% less than two years ago for these four budgets. So, that was with contractual salary increases, all the things we do, these budgets are 5% less. Okay, now, I, I heard, I heard the debate on the parks and rec and everything like that, so there is, but, there is a, one similarity in our department is that LoSIP is being pulled out of our budget. Now, I heard the question before, but what, what is your real effect if LoSIP wasn't taken out, so that's in here? So, the yellow line is I added back LoSIP, for an accounting purpose, it's not showing up, and LoSIP should be out of this budget because LoSIP is never necessarily always spent in a year, it's just a running total, so I, in my opinion, and I worked with the first selectman, I think it's the right thing for the town to do to pull it out, but I added it back in, just to make sure that you guys could compare apples and apples. From last year to this year, if you add back LoSIP, our budget is still down .1%, so our budget is down, and that's including contractual increases and stuff like that, so. The third, the orange color, the next line as far as the moving parts in the highway department is that, in this current fiscal year right now, it's showing in my budget that we have, or in the budget of the highway department, 340,000 for town aid road, we're not getting 340,000, we're getting a half of that, so we're only getting 170, so I'm working it in a $170,000 deficit in this budget from what was approved. So, next year, I'm, we're carrying, in the numbers that you see, the same amount of town aid road, 340,000. Now, I just had a conversation with Anna Johnson, and I'm speculating, I think it's a smart thing to do, is, they're not going to give us any more than they are this year, so we're carrying 340, but in all reality, because we're only getting half of it this year, why aren't they, so, you know, it's not, you know, the smart thing to do is to carry them out, which is what was done, but if we get what, everything else, I mean, we almost have to be, not doom and gloom, but realistic, so conservative, my, this budget is down 4.5% of what we work in, and these are all the things, the drainage projects, all the, all the things that you do, you know, in all reality, next year, we're going to be down 4.5%. So, the green, the green, you guys always want to know, what are you doing to try to consolidate, and what are you trying to do to save money? So, green is money, the green is, we're trying to save money. So, just a few highlights, because then we can get into the questions on the specifics, but we're almost coming up on actually just over a year, a year and like two weeks where Chuck Holyfield, our highway supervisor, retired, and actually retired on St. Patrick's Day, so I can remember the day. We did not fill the position, I stood there for a while, because I knew what was going on with the state, and, and I say this, and this is on the record, it's not, we did not fill the position because Chuck Holyfield, or the highway supervisor, wasn't needed, it's just I saw the writing on the wall, that if we filled our position, then we were going to be decimated, and this is the time where you need to be, you know, you know, have some flexibility in your budget, and actually, we're over 25, 30,000 in our snow budget right now from all these March and April storms, and I'm not coming back to the board because we had flexibility, because that was still in the budget to actually fill our position, but we never did, so we have the money to save, and we gave up the cut, mid-year cut, so I'm not coming back to the board as far as, there was a comment before that the departments have never funded, and we don't come back, I don't come back to this board, we're not asking for more money, we're trying to make it happen here. Not only the highway supervisor position, but we had a custodial position, actually, if you know, Jane Bowen is now, when Anna Hartung left, the assistant at the, Kathy Wilson's assistant at the senior center, she, my custodian actually was promoted into that position, and we didn't fill that custodian position, the 20-hour position, so that is savings on the building maintenance side. It's not easy, because that person was going to the police station, FSB, they were going to emergency management, but we're making the other custodians do more in the same amount of time. Number seven, we worked, you're going to see the telephone line, it's not a lot, but I mean, every, every bit amounts, but we looked at the phone, the phone minutes for all the contracts, and you can put zero minutes in a lot of people's cell things, because we have a shared plan, so if, if we have 40 phones in the town, some people might be big users, or some might be small, but if you look at the total, all you need is the total amount of minutes, so I, I reduced a bunch of employees to have zero minutes, because it's shared, so that's how we were able to save 300 minutes, is, all these plans went from $50 down to 35, so that was savings which helped. Number eight, I, I can't say it's something that I'm announcing to you now, but the fact that we did renegotiate with our union last year, and kept this transfer station now Tuesday through Saturday, that was an idea I worked on with Mr. Nickerson, we were able to do it, now, saved $23,000, now the people show up at 1 o'clock on a Saturday afternoon, transfer station's open, they're elated, we're looking at the fees there, to try to get more revenue, but I know there's, it's another tax, so we have to be careful of how much we hit the people there. Number nine, we renegotiated, because I know this board's always looking at us, try to, you know, negotiate contracts, and, and we get it, we understand, we renegotiated scrap metal, the last month, I get $213 a gross ton scrap, we, before, we were getting like a quarter of this, but now they're locked into, they have to pay, the scrap dealer has to pay 90% of the New York market rate for scrap metal, so they can't just make up the number, it's, it's out of an index.
So previously, it was about $50 a ton?
Well, when we did this, it was about 50, I mean, it's definitely higher than that though, but, I mean, we would not, if we just had no contract in sending scrap metal up, you're not going to get $213 a ton, but that's what we're getting, I mean, so the revenue is definitely increasing. Number 10, as you're aware, I went through, in front of the board, we basically almost got the cooling tower all put in, and so that will be the cooling tower and the boilers done at the community center, was asking the town for no additional money, which is pretty much a coup, I think, because we were able to leverage, greatly leverage, ever-source incentive money, anything, putting out to bid, we put the, our original lesson, it was 160, we put it out to bid, got it for 115, that was with, with that, when we put the engineer package together. So, that's number nine, excuse me, number 10. And then 11 is, we're looking at all the different energy savings of trying to, we did the streetlights, which I know, again, it was last year, but that, the numbers came in later, but we ended up getting a $180,000 rebate on going to LED streetlights, so that was all revenue that, that, that we weren't going to get, and I know now Waterford's asking about it, and other towns are trying to do it. We've already done energy incentive products at FS, oh, we just did the one at FSB, which is board-approved, we've done it at PD, we've done it at Town Hall, we've done the whole community center, and now we're looking at the old highway garage, now we're getting the, we kind of got all the low-lying fruit, but now the old highway garage, it's a garage, but all the lighting's old and antiquated, we got care and share up there, old boilers, we're trying to look at ways, because even though there's not a lot of activity there, the utility bills are a lot, and I'm trying to cut down on that. So, all, that's why I just want to do the 10,000, that's the, that bit of, as far as the overview, but a lot of things are going on here, I got two staff here, Bill Shear, my deputy, and Victor Benny, my town agent, these guys are constantly, we're all kinds, always trying to think of ways, value-added projects for town, and, I mean, that's all with having those half a million dollar cuts. So, I will specifically go over the budgets, so whether, you mentioned the 105, which is the first number, this is, the, there's really not much in this budget, I, this is probably my closest budget to a lot of the other departments in town where there's people and pencils, not a lot here. I, I will say that, that when you look at increases, no one's getting the increase that's here, that's, that's, that's old or catch-up as far as how that, how they're accounting for that, I do know that coming into next year, we've been working with the town, and working with the board of selectmen as far as getting any increases, and no one, no unaffiliates are getting large increases, like I know the board was concerned about in the past.
So you're saying this 5.08 is wrong?
It's not reflective of what increases people are getting in next year's budget, it's always a catch-up, I think you're aware, because they never, the unaffiliates never, never was settled before the budget process, so this is a makeup for past years, that going forward, no one is, and the, the unaffiliated group is trying to work with, trying to get this stuff settled sooner than later, so that there's cost certainty to the town of what it's going to be. I just, I know, I know Lisa's one of the questions you would ask in the past, and I'm trying to answer the question before you ask it, is that no one's getting 5%, that's, that's not, that's a thing of the past, no one's, that's not something that's happening. Is there, I can, from each budget, that, there's really not much in this 105, I certainly can answer any questions?
Yeah, I do want to stop at each department.
Yeah, I understand that.
If there's any questions from the board on 105?
So I got to be honest, I was looking at 317, because that's what you were talking about.
I was.
But I'm happy to, do you want to jump back to 105?
No, I want to go through 105, we're going to go through now each individual budget.
Bill first said the 105, but I just asked to do a, a quick highlight of the four, because I'm here, because they all, they all kind of work together, because I'm always watching the four of them together, but we're in 105 right now, that's the one I'm talking about, and there's really not a lot here, the budget is, I mean, we, we cut down the stormwater management numbers.
So, any questions for 105 from the board?
Yes, I, I have one, about the transportation line item 246, travel for the town, when the town vehicle's not available, could you just give some backstory there? I mean, it seems like we're discussing training and seminars, and then also general travels, so can you break that down at all?
Well, yeah, I can, so we have two, we have two working, well, we have three working vehicles, and I say working, because they're not always working, because we always get the hand-me-downs from the police, the, the, the one that I typically drive, it's not working right now, is like a 10-year-old vehicle that was handed by the police and stuff like that, then we also have Explorer that was the old K-9 vehicle, that's probably at least a 10-year vehicle, and then we have a Blazer that's worse. So, to answer your question, we don't always have enough vehicles to go on the different bus, so it's a lot of us around town, go to meetings and stuff like that, we try to use those vehicles as much as we can, but certain staff, they're, they're always constantly going to jobs, I mean, Public Works is about being out there, we're not.
Well, that, that part I understand, my question is more the breakout between money, money spent for training versus money spent in that line item, for travel.
I'd say 90% of it is from, is from working around, and maybe 10%,
And using their own vehicles.
And 10% might be going to, to going to training, very rarely do we get to go to trainings, because unfortunately, we're pretty busy doing the things that we're doing.
Okay, and, and it would be at a current, like IRS rate, what are you using for that?
Yeah, I, I mean, the town usually says every end of June, what, what that rate is, I think it's 56, so what I, it's whatever that is.
I just didn't tell from looking at your, at what you had written here in your narrative, you know, what the breakout was, but that's, that's fine.
It's, it's, at least 90% is, is just driving around, going to things, and going to meetings, but not very little going to training.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions on that side?
No, no, 105.
Questions on 105?
So, so let's just, because I love talking about salary increases, so what we're saying is the 5.06 increase was for last year.
Correct. If Anna can answer that, I don't put the number.
That's, that's a lot of money, I know it already happened, but, I mean, no, you know.
Going, going forward?
We're working on it.
We're working on it.
Great, just wanted to point it out, thanks.
John, anything on 105?
No.
All right, I have no questions on 105, so if we can move on to building maintenance, 113.
So, just, just to highlight this one is, I mean, the telephones went down to 3,000, which I talked in the overview, the fire protection has been going up every, 10% every, I have a different debate with a different group, the water and sewer commission, that would like that to go up a lot more than that, and I tell them, in that chair, that Mr. Nickerson said, I'm wearing the other hat, because if you make it go up on, on this end, then I have to then cut things more, so, it's just that that's always a debate at the water and sewer commission, because it, it used to be 70,000, that amount, it got dropped down to 12, and every year, we've been bringing it back by the water and sewer commission's request, at a minimum of 10%, it's a lot for me to absorb here, in the other hat I wear, but it's, it's a necessary evil for the fire protection. Everything else, longevity, I don't control, and overtime, they put a little more overtime in, because now we lost this extra person, we lost this 20-hour swing person, so I only have three custodians that are out there, and when, say if someone's off for vacation for two weeks, that's overtime, so I mean, now I got to fill them, I mean, you can't just not have people there, so, they gave an extra $1,000.
Okay. Questions?
New town garage at Colton Road, remember when it first was purchased, it was going to save money, one reason to keep the trucks inside the garage, maintain them there, especially in the wintertime, the startup time wouldn't be as long.
Yep.
Can you give us an idea about how much money it saved the town by doing that?
It's hard to quantify.
It's ballpark, I mean, if possible?
I mean, it probably, it probably saves a year or two on every life of every truck out there, I mean, it's not just the keeping them inside, it's the washing, like, well, we had our April snowstorm the other day, and we were washing all the trucks, we were, we could never do that in the old garage, because you can't wash outside, the D P doesn't let you, so now we can lift up, I mean, if you've ever been in there, I mean, it's like a, almost a 45, 50-foot ceiling, you lift up the truck, you hope, after every snowstorm, we pick all the trucks in, they're lined up like an elephant caravan, and they go in there and wash every truck, because if we can get two more years out of that truck, I'll tell you the number is that, it's going to be a lot, it's going to be 15,000, 20,000 a truck, so, keeping them in there keeps the longevity, keeps all the equipment, I mean, we have so much equipment in town, and that place is stuffed, it's got everything in there, it's, but it's hard to put an actual number, it's a lot.
But it's substantial.
Well, yeah, all the big trucks.
Over time.
Oh, yes, so, it, it's the maintenance facility, I mean, those guys are constantly fixing, I mean, through December, January, fixing the garbage trucks, fixing all the plow trucks, it just, that place is, is a godsend to have it.
What's the old garage being used for, just?
Storage.
That's it?
Yeah, it's storage and care and share, care and share's in there.
Okay, yep.
But it's, unfortunately, it's got an old, big boiler, and, you know, it's very inefficient, so that's what we're looking at, I actually have numbers on doing an energy efficiency project, because, I mean, it's a garage, I mean, what do you keep it at 50 degrees? I mean, 45 degrees, I mean, not a lot, but that's what's for storage right now.
Okay, that's all for now, thanks.
Lisa. So fire protection?
Yes.
Do you have actual data for the last several years? I know what they're asking for estimates, but.
What kind of data, like?
Well, you have actual expense under 17, right, under 2017, you have 32, 380.
Yep.
Okay, so, do you have actuals for the previous two or three years that could actually support a 10% increase going forward, or is this just what you've been asked to do?
I've been asked to keep re, there, it's not, there's not an activity on the water side that causes this to go up, it's that they want more money to get back to the 70,000 that, the town used to, the, let me make sure I get this right, the water department used to be flushed with cash, and the town was strapped a bunch of years ago, so they dropped it from 70 to 12, well, and honestly, the water department does keep, maintain all the hydrants in town, they, they do all the things that they're.
Right, but is that to rate payers? The water department is funded through rate payers, yeah.
We're a separate.
I know, that's my point.
But the, but the hydrants supply the entire town.
Right.
So, the, there's a cost to maintain these hydrants.
Right, flushing, all of that.
Flushing, retaining, replacing, it's, and water pressure, most, most expensive, the water pressure to get the right amount of gallons out per second, per minute, and that costs the water and sewer department money. We don't charge enough to the town, because it's, it's, it's a value to the entire town, not just the water.
You mean the water and sewer department doesn't charge enough?
Doesn't enough.
When you said we, I didn't know what you meant by that.
Water and sewer, I'm sorry, the chair there too, water and sewer does not charge the town the actual costs, 39 wouldn't cover it, but it, it, we're trying to get back to a number, where we agreed that we'd go up 10% a year.
Until you get back to 70?
So, so some numbers, on average, other utilities, so we're very unusual utility, Eastline, water and sewer, because a lot of people think we're the same for the town, we aren't, but I mean, we are, we aren't, but, but most of the Norwich Public Utilities, or even in Waterford, it's Violia, they charge on average 100 to 125 a hydrant, we have 800 hydrants in town, so now that we're at 40, that's $50 a hydrant, so the discussion of water and sewers, we're only charging the town $50 a hydrant, everyone else is charging 100, 125, so there's some numbers, and, and they're not, that, that doesn't seem like enough, but there's a lot of synergies for the town.
I'm convinced, I, I follow what you're saying.
Yep.
So, my next question is, with the great job that you did on the long-term facilities plan, which I think is wonderful, are you able to use that going forward when you built this budget in terms of economies of scale, you know, doubling up on contracts, and using the same vendor, all of that stuff, which is the reason why we did that plan, so what, are you able to yield any fruit from that?
It hasn't kicked in yet, because if you see in there, besides the, the cooling tower, besides the boilers that we just took care of, I don't have any huge, large ticket items right now, like, I don't have a big HVAC contract that I can team together with the school with the boilers and some of that, can we look at the service contract that the, that the school has, and we have, we both use Empor, I mean, can we, can we go, look at something like that? Yes, we can look at that, have I done it yet? I have not, because, you know, we still have contracts through the end of this year, but that's, that's an area we can look at.
Okay, so you're already eyeballing something?
Absolutely.
You're the guy wearing the orange vest too, between you, our budget and the Board of Ed, in terms of using that plan, is that right?
The orange vest, I'm not sure.
So, we talked about this a couple times, right, so Board of Ed has a long-term facilities plan, the town does, but who is bringing those two plans together to say, you got an air handler you need out, we have one down here, I thought you might be the guy for that, but I don't know if that is, I still don't know who's owning the utilization between of, of both of those plans, is, is that you?
Well, I don't know that right now, because that hasn't been discussed, but this is.
What do you recommend?
Well, let me just, the school asked us to look at, our department to look at, the high school and the middle school, they got a, they got a proposal from some architect to look at like all the life safety and all the HVAC, and all the code stuff, it was like $75,000, now, they're smart enough, they're not going to do that, but that kind of review is extremely comprehensive, and honestly, we're, we already lost Mr. Holyfield, and we already doing all this consolidation, we're trying to, by dropping 500,000, we're, we're flying around at the 17 jobs that we're throwing the balls, and so I don't know if we're going to get involved in that yet, I will certainly have discussions the first selectmen, but I haven't been running over to find out what's going on with the boilers, but we can have discussions with the Board of Ed.
I would think we would want to.
I understand that, I'm just, I'm, we're just trying not to have any of the balls drop, I mean, right now, the, the balls will drop, if we start going in this direction, then the park won't be fixed, or this won't be fixed, so we're, we're trying to get a lot of things going, but that, that doesn't mean we can't have the discussion, and we do talk with the superintendent a lot, we have much more, you know, talking about looking at plowing for over there, we're just, we've been trying to find synergies like you guys are asking for, but those don't happen overnight.
When do they happen?
I, I talk to the, the school and, about things like plowing, and it's, it's when the school wants to have us look at those things.
Maybe we can set a target date, just to take a look at that, I don't know if it's six months, a year, whatever it is, just to say, yep, we've, we've looked at this, and here's some savings between the two, between the town and the Board of Ed.
Yeah, the, the, the Board of Ed has a facilities person, and I can talk to that person, Ted Hunt, about what his thoughts are, and we do communicate as well when it comes to things.
Thanks, Joe.
Do you have a slow season?
No, there's never, I, well.
There's not a time of year that would be the best time for you to, it's crazy for one reason and then the other.
17 years I've been doing this now, there's never a slow season.
If it's not snow, it's grass, it's beaches, it's plowing, it's leaves.
I mean, this was a tough winter, I, and, and you know, honestly, we're going over budgets and other, other budgets as far as going over, I mean, I was keeping the first selectman and Anna abreast the whole time of, hey, we're about to go over, but I'm also saying, this is how I'm going to cover it, and it's not from, I want to cover it that way, I mean, the other thing I was just telling her is that, I was doing really good for salt, up until a month ago, and I probably used another, you know, 60, 70,000 in salt, well, I had this discussion on Easter morning with the first selectman of, should I send the guys out on Monday morning, and the storms come in around, and, and anytime you ever think about money, that's what happens, Monday morning, come in at 7:00 in the morning, and, you know, all of a sudden Armageddon, and getting the calls on the buses, no one got hurt, and we did what we had to do, but you start thinking about money in our area, and people get hurt, so.
Now, just to Lisa's point, whether or not there was a time period that would get the two together better. Jason, questions? I'm sorry, were you doing?
So, the town garage, it's just used, the old one's just used for storage and care and share?
Correct.
What kind of storage?
Okay, so, there's eight doors, and everyone's got a door, so, I mean, so when I say, it's, it's actually spray painted, other things, sewer's got one, water's got one, Mr. Morris had one, I mean, the fire marshals had one or two, the police have one, highway has one, I mean, every single inch of that place is shoved, all the equipment, the sweeper, the water thing, oh, we have that, you know, you ever seen on the, so, the Brady Slime, the big truck that's got all the cameras on it? That's got to be inside, that's taking up a bay, I mean, if you ever go look in there, all, we have jet skis in town for the police, we have all these mules, they're all packed in there, we actually, we're actually putting stuff underneath the Butler Town water tank now, that's, all the beach groomers go up, up north into town, they're actually in Monville actually, but they're, they're underneath the water tank, because it's a, it's a storage area that's not frozen, and care and share's in the other area.
That's it?
Nothing else on 113.
The only thing I would say is, it seems like for the fire protection, I understand you're trying to increase 10,000, or 10% a year, but it seems like there should be a target there somewhere for what the actual cost is, and maybe it's 90,000, not the old 70,000, and maybe it's 60,000, but it feels like there should be a target that we know 10% a year till when, there should be some kind of endpoint.
We'll all be sitting in different, someone else will be sitting in our seats by the time we get to that number, and that number could be redefined at any time, right?
No, that's unlikely.
We know 70 is a minimum, and maybe at, at some point, we need to probably call Aquarian and some of the other private water companies and say, what do you charge, you know, what basis per hydrant you gave us tonight, and that might be the number we use, which would be fair to the water payers.
Okay, if there's no other questions on 113, we move on to Public Works, 317, everybody's favorite.
Well, this is the bigger budget, but let me just kind of quickly go over the highlights, line 211, out of the personal services, so that is, that used to be Chuck Holyfield, the highway supervisor, it used to be 75% of my salary, and it shouldn't read, I, I don't, I guess I could change, there's no office manager, the other, that, that is the deputy director of public works, so 75% deputy director of public works, 75% public works director, but now, there's no highway supervisor, so that position, and, and not only did we not fill that, but you have to add the $30,000 in savings in the benefits line somewhere else that we didn't, so, that was a big savings, and that's why I'm not coming back to ask you guys for money on the, on the snow budget, because I kind of knew that we were in for lean times, but now I have the flexibility of not having to cut people, hopefully not. So that's that, we save the money in overtime accounts, that used to be the actual expense back in 2016, 7, or, I mean, it was, it used to be in the 30s overtime, and now we're down into teens or 20. No other changes on the budget except fleet fuel, the increase in fleet fuel is because, if, if you've gone to the gas tanks, the fuel prices are going up, so I, I factored in a higher price for fuel, just to say, I have not locked in the price of fuel next year, I've been watching it, because...